Call order the committee, the whole meeting of Monday, October 7th, 2019. We have a roll call, please.
Trustee Martinez.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Here.
Trustee Curtis.
Here.
Trustee Lowry.
Here.
Trustee Gaffino.
Here.
And Mayor Berman.
Here. No audience comments, no trustee comments. Part of discussion tonight, number one, recreational cannabis. Mr. Toth.
Thanks again, Mr. Mayor. My number one call agenda tonight is recreational cannabis. These are text amendments to zoning ordinance as it relates to the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act that is going to affect January 1st, which is going to allow adults older than 21 to purchase, possess, and consume cannabis products. As a result, we're looking to adopt certain uses into our zoning ordinance. Just for discussion's sake, these are the types of businesses we'll be referring to tonight, just as sort of a guide here. This was brought by the Plant Commission, so it's just nice to have these available for many questions that might come about. Just a little bit of background, as you recall, last time, in 2014, the Village Board approved an ordinance that allowed medical marijuana in all non-residential zoning districts as a permitted use, also to cultivation centers as a special use in the I-2. As far as the medical side goes, the Medical Cannabis Pilot Program Act does not allow medical dispensaries on residential properties. At that point in time, too, in 2014, there was a buffer required from medical cannabis dispensaries that required them to be 1,000 feet from schools, parks, and daycares. I just want to make note that that was actually removed, and basically, any dispensary that opened after July 1st, 2019, was not subject to that 1,000-foot buffer. So it kind of comes into play in the discussion, but I just want to make that a reference for tonight. A little bit of timeline on the discussion. So basically, if all goes as planned, we will have a total of five meetings, public meetings, to discuss this topic. As you recall, back in August, the committee of the whole discussed it. The board was not interested in allowing onsite consumption of product. They wanted to further explore the idea of allowing cannabis businesses in the village, and at that point in time, the conclusion was to direct staff to solicit feedback from the Plant Commission. As a result to that, September 3rd, we went to the Plant Commission to solicit feedback from them. Steve gave a really detailed presentation on the Tax and Regulation Act. We talked about the uses, and the uses that I had showed you previously. There were members of MedMan and Pharmacan present to answer questions, and provided a, also provided a presentation to the board, to the Plant Commission. At that point in time, there were no public comments from the general public either. We did post the notice, and obviously, I think we posted the meeting on Facebook, just to gather attention on the topic. At that point in time, we focused on four integral questions to the Plant Commission, you know, whether or not we want to limit the number of dispensaries, what particular zoning district was appropriate for cannabis dispensaries, whether or not to allow cannabis dispensaries as a permitted or special use, and whether or not to adopt setbacks for recreational marijuana dispensaries. Now, we had the Plant Commission last week, which is the formal public hearing on the topic, and I'll go through that next slide, to kind of give some of the results of that. Obviously, we're here tonight talking about it, gathering feedback, and if the board directs us to, we'd move forward with final consideration potentially on October 21st. So when this went to the Plant Commission, there were a total of six items that were advertised for the meeting itself. Obviously, the crux of the conversation was recreational cannabis businesses, and how they pertain to buffers, and the types of uses that we're going to allow them, what zoning districts are going to allow them in. As you see on the left side, this is what was proposed to the Plant Commission. Now, if you look in the right column, it's nearly identical, now, with the exception of two items. Number five was the buffer discussion. Now, I'll go through the zoning in a minute, but a lot of the conversation ensued in the Plant Commission was whether or not to require that buffer. Staff had originally discussed the idea of having 1,000-foot buffer from recreational cannabis dispensaries, from schools, parks, and daycares. We sort of used the medical cannabis as a template. Also, too, in the Cannabis Regulation Tax Act, which is the recreational side, it has 1,000-foot setback or buffer for the advertisement of product. So we just started with 1,000-foot buffer. And you notice, at the Plant Commission level, it went from 1,000-foot buffer from schools, parks, daycares, childcare facilities, public parks, library. The Plant Commission had a final vote to basically require 1,000-foot buffer, just from the four public schools located in town. And I'll show you a map on how that affects the buffering, and then the commercial uses as well. The other one was to include and take vote on whether or not to memorialize the 1,500-foot separation. The Regulation Tax Act requires that all recreational dispensaries be 1,500 feet from each one another, so the Plant Commission, per recommendation, decided to memorialize that in the zoning ordinance, in the event that the state were to remove it as a requirement in the future, similar to what they had done with the 1,000-foot buffer for medical marijuana dispensaries. So at the end of the day, we have a positive recommendation from the Plant Commission to allow recreational cannabis dispensaries in all non-residential districts as a special use. Again, permitted use means that they can do it as a right, special use meaning they have to come in, it's property-specific, they have to notify for a public hearing, giving anyone the chance to come in and make comment. In that way, the village can also establish certain standards associated with the actual special use itself. The alternative that would have been, potentially as a permitted use, was some sort of pre-qualified list of requirements, maybe hours of operation, so on and so forth. So when staff proposed was a special use in non-residential districts, and the Plant Commission concurred with that. Also, too, were the miscellaneous type uses, cannabis craft growers, cannabis-infusing businesses. We advertise that as a special use in the I-2 district, which is the general industrial district. The reason being is that in the I-2 district, there's a use that basically is a catch-all, and it says, "Use is not otherwise specified." So what we did was, we identified them, as opposed to them coming in and saying, "Well, we don't allow this in a district, the default will be the I-2." We just included it, included them as uses in the I-2 district as a special use, where cultivation centers were already a special use. This was the 1,000-foot buffer that was discussed by the Plant Commission. This is what was presented to them. Obviously, you have a key here, showing schools, parks, smaller daycares, which we went to the DCFS website to find where the private daycare facilities were. So this is what that buffer map looks like. This is what the Plant Commission had talked about to some extent at the meeting. It was actually the majority of the conversation. You had half the Plant Commission that wanted a buffer, the other half that did not. So what they had done was, they actually voted on a conclusion that was a 1,000-foot buffer from the four public schools in North Aurora, Goodwin, Schneider, Fern, Jewel, and this is a result of the positive vote from the Plant Commission, is the buffering that you see here. So, obviously, tonight is just the general discussion. We're here to answer any questions you might have. We have the recommendations from the Plant Commission in front of you tonight. Here to answer any questions you might have, or facilitate discussion. Thank you.
Can you go back to the map that shows the buff, this one? So if you use this map, where are the existing medical dispensaries?
My cursor doesn't work here, but could you, do you see where the actual police center property is, at airport, where airport comes out?
Yeah.
It's just south of that. So there's that southernmost bubble. South of that is the, I think it's 1, I want to say 161, South Lincoln Way, it's just south of that bubble.
Okay.
It's almost directly across the street from the police department.
Oh, there you go. Thanks, Bill. This actually is the area where the current facility is. The operators have also expressed interest in allowing or selling recreational cannabis out of that location until they, you know, such time where they find a new location. In the event that they do sell recreational product out of that location, they would still also require to come back and get a special use for the additional recreational sales, where they're already selling medical.
Well, I mean, I like this map much better than the next one, just around the schools. I mean, why would we allow it within 1,000 feet of a park? Or a church, for that matter? I mean, I don't know why we're doing this, but I'm against it to begin with, but I certainly would like to see us have the least amount of these dispensaries in the village, rather than more. I just think we're ignoring the data on traffic and crime, we're ignoring the science that this has an impact on villages, and I think we're going to regret it.
The licenses for the same user, right? The same person, the same business, correct? They're just switching locations? Or is it a different business?
Well, this is just in general, this is just a zoning discussion. They would have to come back, the current operator, Vera Life, at that location, they would have to come back. If this is approved, as is right now, being a special use in the B-3 district, they would have to come back and get that approval.
Trustee Carroll, to your point earlier, if the buffer zone is an issue, the board has the ability, buffers or no buffers, you can always impose a limit of the number of dispensaries you would allow in the town, too. That's an option.
That was my question. I know when we issue liquor licenses, they have to have an approval to have another liquor license added to the village. Is there a way we could do something similar with dispensaries? Have a set number of licenses, and then if somebody wants to open one, it would have to be something voted on by the board?
If the board wanted to go that way, that's, the Plant Commission actually reviewed that at their initial meeting in September. It was the Plant Commission's choice not to limit it at that time.
I'm with Mark in that I'd like to see fewer, rather than more. However, I'm not against totally disallowing a legally available product to be sold.
The communication that I have had, one that was against having a dispensary in our community, even though we already have got a medical one, I suppose they're against that, too, they didn't mention it. But what I've heard mostly is from those people that are against marijuana, per se, for recreational use. And that really is not our argument. That was something that if they were to be discussed in Springfield, not in North Aurora. So it is law, and I think that, therefore, I think we want to control it the best we can. And I think the Planty Commission did a very good job. They spent a lot of time, in both their meetings, on the discussion of this, ignoring the fact that they may be against recreational use of marijuana. They were trying to define what would be the best thing, where would be the best place to have it, North Aurora. So I think that's the thinking that we should have also, in our concerns. I don't know, you know, we need to define what we feel would be in the best interest of the village, where would be the best place to have it.
Well, with all due respect.
If we're going to have it, if we're going to have it, yeah.
I disagree that we don't have a responsibility to look at whether or not we want this in our village.
Oh, the use of it, the use, I said the use of it.
Well, just because Springfield made a decision, they still left a lot of responsibility to us, and rather than just going along with Springfield, Springfield doesn't always make the right decisions, as we all know, and rather than just blindly going along, there is a mountain of data out there that says that when villages invite this type of dispensary into their city limits, crime goes up. And we were just talking in the operations committee about our revenue, I mean, that's going to be a concern for our police, and having to respond. And the idea that these drugs are not going to make it into our schools is just preposterous to me. The idea that we don't think that if somebody can go unrestricted and buy in a dispensary in North Aurora, and they're not going to be selling it at West Aurora, I think we're fooling ourselves. You know, I have to show my license every time I buy Sudafed, but I can go in and buy 45 joints, and do whatever I want with it, and come back tomorrow and buy 45 more joints. And there's no restriction on that.
Well, Trustee Carroll, there's also, that same argument would be applied to the liquor stores as well, that same exact, your same exact comments, they can buy it at the liquor store and resell it, and there is some restrictions, which means 21 years old. So myself, I'm inclined to go with what the Plant Commission is recommending myself. I'm in favor of that. I think that's a, however, I do have a question regarding that. How many, what's an estimate of how many are possible under the plan recommendations buffer?
Well, so, if you look at, are you talking about as proposed by the Plant Commission, or as originally proposed by staff with 1,000-foot around schools, parks, and daycares?
Just around the schools, like the Plant Commission.
Okay, so this will give you an idea here. Now, the schools inherently are nestled within residential neighborhoods, and they are quite a distance from commercial properties, industrial properties, office properties. So you can see here, it really only affects certain portions of Central Orchard Road corridor. Those properties right there are vacant, the Mango Creek property, and the Zeppelac property on the north side of 30 Orchard Row, which is right in this area here. Otherwise, it kind of, it kind of leaves areas alone. This here is actually wetland, there's really, there's no impact here. So the buffers really aren't impacting a lot in regards to existing commercial properties, just namely in this area here, in this campus. But again, you're talking a 1,500-foot separation between actual dispensaries themselves. Just to go a little visual here, there's a key down here which shows you the 1,500-foot What happens is, too, is that we're, after talking to people in the business, it's hard, not everyone's receptive to it, property owners are responsive to the actual inquiries, whether or not they can come in. So it's hard to gauge a certain number, but you can just see based upon what's here within these corridors, and that, including that 1,500-foot separation, and how that applies to the businesses.
So what you're saying is, they would only be able to function in those areas that are colored, correct?
Correct. And as a special use, meaning that any time one of these wants to open up, they have to come before the Plant Commission and the board for a full public hearing, meaning that the, the actual hearing itself has to be notified within proper meters on 250 feet. We put signs on the property, and the newspaper advertisements are required as well. So they're properly notified for each individual property, and each individual property will be reviewed on its own merit and the general context of the area. This was a major discussion point with the Plant Commission. If staff were to do a special use in working with the petitioner, we could take these into context a little bit. If someone was near a park, we could actually list those sorts of distances within our staff report, and as part of our analysis as well, if that's something that, you know, were to be a concern to the Plant Commission and Village Board.
So for just a history, the thousand, to go back, the 1,000-foot buffer that you see right now was originally proposed because the Medical Marijuana Act, a couple years ago, the Compassionate Care Act, had 1,000-foot buffer on parks, schools, and daycares, libraries, and things like that. That buffer was removed this summer by the legislature. So the new recreational marijuana law does not have a 1,000-foot buffer at all. So in theory, the only buffer is the 1,500-foot between dispensaries buffer that we're aware of. So once again, this buffer came from the fact that the current location that we have in town already has medical. We assume that they move anywhere or stay in the same location, they're still selling medical, so the 1,000-foot applied. So we initially started with that 1,000-foot discussion. So I just wanted to remind the board that that was how the initial presentations sort of board were made, but as of right now, there are no state requirements for 1,000-foot buffer, except for advertisement of product. You can advertise 1,000 feet from a school.
I just would like to say, when we first initiated these conversations, I did have a concern about crime, to Mark's point. And my concern was based on the research I had done, most of the crime is directly connected to the fact that these businesses are primarily cash-based, due to the federal regulations not allowing them to go through the banking system. And I don't know, has anybody heard anything about that changing? Because I'm in favor, and to Mark's point, too, I'd like to see less of these than more. So I would like to see a licensing program set in place, and I do think we should go back to the 1,000-foot buffer.
I have no problem with a 1,000-foot buffer whatsoever.
That's where I'm at as well. I think less is, less is better, you know? I'd be more comfortable with none, but, you know, since we have an option for that, I guess, you know, one would do, I'd rather see the license as well, as Trustee Curtis said, anything to scrutinize and limit, so.
I mean, it's a special use, so, you know, we really have the ability to say yea or nay to whatever, wherever, even though it's a special use in each of those zonings. So I think we really have, but if it would make someone feel better 1,000 foot from a school, that's no problem, because I don't think that's going to have any effect whatsoever on the placement.
Yeah, it looks like, actually, I'm a little bit changed of mind here, it doesn't look like it's going to limit it all that much anyway, it only cuts out that area along Randall Road, primarily.
No.
And part of the, part of that area on 31. If you go back to that other one, you'll see that, because you can't put them in residential areas anyway.
Now, we're talking about 1,000 foot from the schools only.
I know what we're, yeah. I'm saying, all of this, they would be able to operate out of all that area down south, right?
Yeah, essentially, what will happen is, too, is the first one that comes in and gets approval will kind of set the tone, because that'll establish where those 1,500-foot separation requirements are. So even if you go by this buffer, you still might have a property that's available, but if like, for example, if someone came in and they established their 15, they established their recreational cannabis dispensary here, you're automatically now creating a 1,500-foot buffer around that property. So you've now opened, you've made a restriction on a lot of properties in the area. So the act, it's going to be sort of a domino effect, when the first one to fall will kind of set the tone for where these can be located.
Wait a minute, what you're showing here are the restrictions and all the different ones, not just the schools. We're talking about just schools.
I'm in favor of restriction.
That's what we're talking about right now.
Parks and everything.
The same thing would apply.
This is what the Plant Commission recommends.
Well, I know, but, you know, we got to visually see what you're talking about. Oh, it cuts out all of that. Well, I think 1,000 feet from the schools is inadequate.
I thought we wanted less, rather than more. I thought we wanted to include parks and recreational areas.
That was my position as well.
I do, too, yeah.
I'd rather have less than more.
So again, you're referring to this scenario here. Okay, thank you.
Chief, if you don't mind, I would ask you your opinion, and my thought is, with open spaces and having recreational marijuana, even though it's legal to smoke it in the house, it would make it very, very easy, and I don't know if you agree with me, for somebody to walk in there, walk down the corner to the empty lot, and have a doobie, right? And that can create more of an issue for law enforcement. Would you think perhaps that would be correct?
Technically, you got to be on your own property. You can't just walk out in public and do it.
I don't have any problem with this restriction that you're showing in here. I have no problem with that.
Correct, but if we were not to apply this buffer, you know, and they're able to open those dispensaries by open areas, parks, and however, it would make it fairly easy for somebody just to take a walk home, and perhaps sit down on an empty bench and smoke outside of their own home, correct?
No, you're, you know, the way I interpret it is, you have to be on your own property.
We're talking about selling it, not.
Yeah, you can't, and consuming it, you got to be on your own property now.
He's saying illegally. And you can go anywhere in the village.
Well, you can be illegal, and.
Yeah, what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to guess is, not having a buffer would make it easier for somebody outside of the property to perhaps use it of an illegitimate way, you know, or perhaps, you know, use it in an open space, rather than their own home.
It's against the law to.
Yeah, but the buffers they're talking about are strictly for sales, and in order to, in order to consume it, the buffers would have nothing to do with that, because most of the residential area of North Aurora falls within those buffers, but yet the law states you can, you can consume it on your property.
I think he's suggesting that if it was too near, too convenient to parks, then people would do it anyway, even though it's not legal, because it's so close to an open space.
Correct, it will make it easier for somebody to light up.
So we're talking about restricting it, and I think we have a, I don't have a problem with that. Mark said he didn't have a problem with it, and Laura didn't have a problem with it. So it seems to me like that.
Yeah, I'm agree of the vote for it.
We're in agreement, then, okay.
I mean, so.
Is there any, another issue?
Yeah, I would still like to hear some, I mean, Chief, I know you've got statistics, and crime is not just related to it being a cash-based business. It's traffic, it's, it's the fact, and I agree with you, Mike, wholeheartedly, that the argument is the same whether it's alcohol or marijuana. The difference is, you can measure alcohol impairment, you can't measure marijuana impairment. And that's the trouble that we're going to have with our law enforcement, is you could have somebody smoking in their car, smoking in a field, smoking anywhere, but you can't measure it. And so I think we put the cart before the horse, and we have spent the last 30 years trying to restrict alcohol laws, and make it more strict for drivers and people that drink illegally, but yet we're going to open it up to the entire.
But that'll happen if they sell in Batavia, Mark.
Yeah.
And not necessarily. You have people passing by, but you have people actually coming to North Aurora to buy it. I mean, why not let them go to Aurora, or to Chicago? Why do we have to have them coming here to buy marijuana? I mean, not one citizen that I've talked to has been in favor, other than Pharmacan and the medical facility, the private citizens aren't in favor of this.
Well, we certainly didn't see that in our, in the open meetings that we've had, where we've advertised that. We've had, what, a total attendance of three people that have come to those meetings and showed any interest whatsoever. So if what you're saying is true, I think people are against the use of marijuana recreationally. I have, I don't, I have no problem with that, people feel that way. And there's a lot of people that feel that way, and maybe that, some others on the board feel that way. But I think whether they buy it in Batavia, or whether they buy it in Aurora, they're going to be using it in North Aurora. And I guess if it's being sold and used in North Aurora, I think it's been my feelings that we should have control of where it's being sold, and where, and how it's being consumed, to the best of our ability. So that's, that's where I'm coming from. And I think that we're doing a good job of restricting where. I think we're doing a good job of making it a special use in all these different locations. So we have the control that we have. You know, Aurora could approve one on Sullivan Road, or on 31, right south of the towway, and it would be adjacent to North Aurora, the same as what Batavia or somebody else could. So I think that we know that what we can see, and we certainly have had no problems with the medical marijuana.
It's a different issue entirely. Medical marijuana, it serves a purpose. It's treating somebody's condition. You're talking, there's a huge difference between medical and recreational.
I agree.
So if I could, back to the zoning aspect of this, try to make sense of it, so I can, you know, maybe move forward or not. We have a couple of recommendations from the Plant Commission. I've not, I've not heard anyone speaking against what the Plant Commission wrote, or what was proposed to the Plant Commission, regards to non-residential uses as a special use.
No problems there. I think we can narrow it down from this, and we decide ourselves, on the board. We can say that we only want to have one in the village, not 10. Of course, the Plant Commission has said it's unlimited. So from that standpoint, we can change that. I think at this point in time, we're talking about the, how far it should be from restricting it from some location, and restricting it from the, what the zoning it should be in. So they presented that, I think we all agree with that.
Okay.
To narrow it down from this, we can change that ourselves, that our.
Correct. Yeah, so it sounds like in agreements with what the Plant Commission, but what they originally was proposed then with that 1,000-foot buffer, which is this one here, correct? So it seems, everyone seems to be speaking to this, this buffer map?
That's it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
When we do the zoning ordinance, we would need to address the issue of numbers. So if there, if there is any desire on the board's part to limit it to a number, before we put together a draft, or before we finalize one, we would need to know that.
Well, I think we will. Well, I think we will.
Yeah, couldn't we just number the, or limit the amount or the number of facilities?
Certainly.
You could.
For the size of North Aurora, do you think we need more than one?
I don't think so.
I don't think we do either.
Right.
We're going to need a cannon.
And this is a question for Kevin. If we say we're only going to allow one, then are we having like an antitrust issue, limiting competition?
No. Antitrust would be an issue as between competitors. We're not in the competitive business of selling cannabis, so it wouldn't be an antitrust issue. It could be a discrimination issue if, you know, we were favoring someone for the wrong reasons, but you know, we wouldn't be doing that. There's only one who qualifies now for the first, the first licenses, and that's the medical marijuana facility in North Aurora.
They can have more than one, but that, they don't mean that they're going to have that second one in North Aurora.
Right.
They could have it someplace else.
That's true.
If they got approval someplace else. So there's no reason for the, if we say one is all we want in North Aurora, then one is all we're going to get.
And if we limit it to one, as with liquor licenses, if somebody came in and pitched us for a second one, we could always make a decision at that time whether to open it up to two.
Certainly.
I think that's prudent idea.
So we have that control to do that.
And that's what we want.
If we open it to one, can we ever go backwards?
I think only if they left. We couldn't take it away from them. I think it would be a vested interest at that point.
Well, unless, you know, obviously, we can put in our ordinance, we can have some conditions if they don't, if they don't do those conditions that we have, as you know.
Now, Kevin, to the last point, if we were adopting the zoning ordinance, so say we limit it by one of the use standards, we could amend the zoning ordinance in the future to open it up to one, two, three, unlimited at that time. So that could, that's more of a fluid process. It would just require the text amendment process, sort of what we're going through right now.
Yeah. Right.
I like that idea.
We've got enough on this.
Let's start with one and see how it goes.
Are you limited to one with the buffer requirement still?
I'd like to keep the map that's up now.
That map with one.
And then have one, like one liquor license, have one dispensary license, and then that way we could see if what Mark's saying is true, if we see an increase in crime, if we've got issues, you know, then we know we don't need to propagate more of these.
Well, for expectation purposes, I want to, I can talk to Kevin, but it's my understanding, I don't know if we can actually license these businesses. We looked into that a while ago. But you're limiting it to one, so that's fine. So you don't really need a license at that point, and you have a special use for any other ones, you can always amend the code later. But I don't believe we have the same ability to license these facilities like liquor.
It's not exactly like liquor licenses in the sense that we actually have a local license, so it's not exactly the same.
The control would be the code, the code itself saying you can't have more than one.
So as opposed to a licensing ordinance, it would be in the zoning code, so it's a zoning restriction as opposed to a licensing, but it's kind of the same end result.
Would there be, would there be any liability saying that we're being partisan towards one business?
No.
And, I mean, there won't be any type of liability?
Right now, you only have one in town that's looking to open recreational cohabitated use in town.
Yeah, I'm just questioning if a second business can go through and say, hey, you know what, I'm going to sue the village because we're not even allowed or considered to open a business here because there's only one.
Yeah, and to Mike's point, if someone ever came in and a second company came in, you would just, at that point, it would trigger essentially a redoing or an opening up of the zoning code again. The Board would always have the option to go back to the zoning code and reduce, or excuse me, increase the limit from one to two, if you wanted to. It's just an extra control you'd have.
Sounds good.
Okay, that's enough for number one. Item number two.
Thank you. One second, please.
Mr. Toth.
Next item up is the North Aurora-Aurora Boundary Line Agreement Extension. The North Aurora Boundary, North Aurora-Aurora Boundary Line Agreement was established in December 2000, or excuse me, 1999. It's set for a 20-year term. Basically, I included a portion of the preamble of the agreement to kind of give a sense of what it actually is intended to do. Establish a boundary line, basically draw a line in the sand and then be good neighbors with properties on the other side of that line. The current Boundary Line Agreement includes intergovernmental water agreement as well. It sets for certain areas of the town where we provide water to the city of Aurora and some, maybe some emergency interconnects as well. Now, obviously, we all know where the city of Aurora is, but it does border the village in North Aurora to the south and eastern limits. The majority of the land within the Boundary Line Agreement is already incorporated into the village, or village or respective city. When we'll go through this Boundary Line discussion, the western portion of the village is what we're primarily going to be focusing on as regards to wanting to maintain a Boundary Line Agreement with the city of Aurora. The Boundary Line Agreement is not required to be signed on by both parties, but it's just a way of being a good neighbor. This is the best way to demonstrate the current Boundary Line with the city of Aurora. All the properties illustrated in purple are within the village of North Aurora. There are some unincorporated properties on the North Aurora side of the Boundary Line, Boundary Line again being in blue. And we talked primarily about the west side, and the Tanner Farm and the Berger Farm, which is located north of the Boundary Line, west of Orchard Road. Those are very large farmlands for tract development. We will be talking a little bit about tonight about the east side and the portion of the Marmion Farm, which is located on the west side of Hart Road, but it was currently within the North Aurora Boundary Line. What we're asking for tonight is just sort of an extension of the current agreement. We're not, we're not asking for any changes. Obviously, this is not a formal consideration, but the city of Aurora has expressed interest in the Marmion piece. Again, it's that piece on the west side of Hart Road, which is an unincorporated Kane County. The village and the city have been having discussions back a couple of years now regarding use of that property, if they were interested. Actually, the village would be able to have regulations in place to say what uses could go on that property. But a major part of that discussion has revolved around the stormwater issues associated with that property. There's a lot of the stormwater that is transpiring from the Marmion property to those residential properties to the west. I know, I know the public work staff has been dealing with them, the municipal administration, so we don't want to hand off a property and cause an issue or ignore an issue, but we've been working with the city of Aurora, letting them be aware of the issue so they can properly address it. And through those discussions, we know that, given the current, the current time constraints, that we're not going to have enough time to go through that full boundary exercise. We're just looking to extend it for a one year at this point in time, again, only extending the current boundary, so that way staff can go back with the city of Aurora and have more discussions regarding the Marmion piece. That way, we can get through the actual Boundary Line discussion with them and get a Boundary Line Agreement in place.
Essentially, it's just protection to make sure that we keep everything status quo while we're still negotiating over potential changes to the east side.
Exactly. Now, this property shows the city of Aurora limitations in yellow to the south. That line up on the, in the west side is actually the current Sugar Grove Boundary Agreement that was adopted this year. So again, that line is what we're looking to reestablish with the city of Aurora in the future, but right now, we're just looking for a one-year extension on the current agreement.
Sounds good.
That sounds fine to me, an extension. I have a problem, to me, it looks like it'd be, it looks like it's encroaching on our area to me, if they, if Aurora would get it. Is there any reason why Aurora has expressed an interest? Did they share any ideas why?
I think more of an interest on Marmion's part, if they're going to expand.
That's what I was wondering.
All the rest of their property is in the city of Aurora, and they would like to have it all contiguous.
Okay, okay.
So if they were in, you know, it makes it easier for them, and they certainly have a good working relationship with the city of Aurora as it is, so.
Yeah, basically, Trustee Lauer, you'd have, you would have different zoning regulations and municipal requirements on different sides of the road, so they are sort of looking to unify that. And as far as the extension goes, we actually have put up the notification. It wouldn't become before the Board for consideration until November 18th, so.
Yeah, I was just wondering what, what was motivating Aurora's desire to annex it, and then, but that makes sense completely. If it's all the rest of their properties in one city, it might as well be in one city, I guess.
I wouldn't say we're anxious to give it up.
Well, I'm glad to hear that, because it looks like it fits more into our area anyway, to me, so.
It's in the best interest, I think, of the communities to work out this way.
Okay, I'm fine with that. With the extension.
That's it, you got enough?
Yeah.
Item number three, Mr. Bosco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number three is regarding our involvement with the Southwest Fox Valley Cable Consortium. As you may recall, we had a meeting at the last committee, the whole meeting. We talked about a proposed new funding structure with the consortium, and at the end of the meeting, there was some conversation as to our current involvement in the consortium and whether we wanted to continue that or record our own meetings. Basically, what staff did from that time, we were directed to give some options to provide recording of our own meetings at, if we were to do it in-house. Their memo in front of you tonight laid out, we tried to make it as simple as possible by putting three options together. Option number one is basically status quo, in which you stay with the Southwest Fox Valley Cable Consortium. Currently, they record our meetings, they provide a PEG info channel, they record special events, and they provide public access to a studio. The other two options would be that the village takes over those duties, in which case the second option on the, on the page would be us providing basically recording of the meetings and special events as needed. And then the third option would be us recording meetings, special events as needed, and a PEG channel if the Board should choose to go that, that way. We put a cost breakdown in a chart in front of you to show what the, the cost for each of those options would be. As of right now, what we're looking to do is get direction on basically whether the village would like to continue our relationship or move forward with doing some of these functions in-house. If we were to, to stay in the consortium, the next step would be to re-talk about that proposed fee structure that they had. We never got a resolve on that. We ended up bringing it back here for open discussion on whether or not we wanted to stay members or not. The, if the Board should choose to go to an in-house option, basically, at that point, we have to issue per our resolution and our intergovernmental agreement with the other entities that belong to the consortium, us, Plano, Sandwich, and Yorkville, we would have to issue a 90 days' notice. We believe that there are bylaws that say that we have to continue funding their operations, at least our proportional share for the remainder of their fiscal year. And then they, it's our understanding that they will have 90 days after our notice to decide whether they would like to continue. And if they should stop continuing, there's a, we're not sure if we would get any of the assets that they have that would be our proportional share at that time. So the point of the discussion tonight is where we currently are as far as what we want to do as far as being in the consortium or not, and then that'll take the conversation whichever direction we need.
Well, I, I think this has been something that maybe was a great idea at its conception, but when you take a look at the fact that we're spending $50,000 a year to participate with this, and technology and trends have changed, and everybody's uploading things to YouTube, and they'll watch it at their convenience, I'm more in favor of the option two, where we're doing it ourselves in-house. You know, it's $7,000 to $9,000 a year versus $49,598. I mean, you know, we could hire an additional police officer or, you know, I think that money could be sent, could be spent in a way that would have greater utility to our residents than just, you know, hey, if you, if you by chance have Comcast, you can watch a channel. And if you don't, well, you can't see it anyway, unless you, and don't, we have it on YouTube now anyway, so it's almost a redundancy. We either have what we have now and reduce our expenses by $40,000 a year, or have what we have now and increase them by 50, by $40,000. So I'm, I'm inclined to be in favor of option two.
I as well. The last time this came through, I was a supporter of the consortium and what they're doing, but I just, like Trustee Curtis says, I think technology is leaps and bounds from that time, and people are using less TV, and they're going with Hulu and different ones, and, you know, as much as I like the idea of having somebody be able to go out and, and video something, or, but like, example, Lions Club, you know, I think they did it maybe 15, 20 years ago, and you can do it with your phone now and upload it and then put it on Facebook, and it's just, you know, I do appreciate the work they've done. I don't think the village utilized them as much as they were there for, as far as different things as well, but, you know, that being said, I just think that money could go elsewhere. And option two or three is fine with me. I mean, you know, keep it frugal and broadcast it so people can see it, and just go from there.
Well, one other thing I forgot to mention is, the consortium, one of the things that they have been doing is training people on how to use these types of equipments. Couldn't we use them in the capacity to hire somebody to come and, and do our videos? I mean, I understand their mission, and I agree with the mission to train people to be able to do this type of thing, so if they're training people to do this, instead of us utilizing staff, why don't we just hire the people that we've been funding to get trained to use this equipment?
There's probably others, but that's true. I'm in favor of.
These figures are hard to argue with, yeah.
I'm in favor of two. Second, number two.
Yeah, two or three. I mean, what's the difference between, what's the character generation system?
If you did number three, it would be a little more complicated. That's something we can always add later. We would have to buy a piece of equipment that basically, well, then we'd have to go to Comcast and Metronet and ATT and connect to them and actually provide like a slide show, in which case we provide information on an actual channel, like a Channel 17, something like that.
Option two is fine with me.
Okay. Got enough?
I do.
Do you have comments? Entertaining motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed or adjourned?